Thank you.
I will call this meeting of Franklin Township Board of Trustees regular business meeting to order on July eleventh, twenty twenty four at twelve P. M. I would ask everybody to silence their cell phones and please keep comments to yourself as we are in a business meeting and if there's any distractions or people online. I would ask, John Plushman, will you open his prayer?
Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to do the work honestly and without hesitation for the people of the township, be with our meeting, be with the people of our township for it's a unique prayer, amen.
We know that's our lieutenant to, since we don't get to see him very much, he weeded us in the pledge.
Yeah. Rightfully, in the name of the United States of America and the good republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, sir. Fiscal Officer Lindsey Douglas, please give us a real call.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes. Thank you. Old business, there is none, new business. Patty Spencer, you're up.
Oh.
Quick, quick this time.
I guess. Oh, hello, everybody. Happy Thursday. Hope y'all had a good fourth. I know I did. I just have a couple of things. Starts, the Citizen Police Academy. Columbus Police is accepting applications for upcoming Citizens Police Academy, and I've got information here in case there's anybody interested or know somebody that might be interested. For home repair services, the Central Community House is a recipient of the City of Columbus's Shore Program, which provides basic home maintenance and minor repairs to low and modern income seniors and disabled homeowners. I've got information on that as well. And the last, short on this week, is the Fire Cadet Program. The Columbus Division of Fire has a cadet program, and the application period is open now through, says July fifteenth, which is short. I just get the email on Tuesdays, so it's probably open through Monday. It's eighteen months of paid fire services and EMS training, and I have information on that as well in case anybody is interested or. And that's all I have. Yes.
So for the people that are listening at home and et cetera, especially with what you read about them, the home repairs, et cetera, for seniors, what classifies as a senior?
Probably have to give it a little look, so I would imagine.
It does not say on this flyer. I am guessing most se- if you're with AARP, your senior starts, or your Buckeye Card, your senior starts at fifty-nine. If you, most everybody takes senior as sixty-five and above.
Okay. So I was just curious because there might be people that want to apply or especially, I would urge people, I've known residents that's had insulation, windows, front doors, different things that have been gotten through that.
Yeah, requirements. Must be a homeowner in Columbus. I don't know if that extends into Franklin Township, but sixty and older must have income restrictions and debt, stairs, and railings must be a safety concern.
Okay.
Those are the three requirements they have.
Okay, thank you very much.
I'd like to touch on the Columbus Citizens Academy. I highly recommend it. I went through it. It's a lot of law. You learn a lot of the laws, what officers can and cannot do. There is some hands-on, but it is very informative and very, it goes along with what our guys are seeing on the streets here, too. Highly recommend it.
I'm going to leave this up front for you to share with anybody who might need it.
Thank you, Patty. Appreciate you, everything you do for the community. All right, moving on to public comments. John, how many do we have?
We have one. At this time, I call to the podium, Mr. Jackson. Remember that we have three minutes. We won't interrupt you and you can have the floor.
And he is from nineteen fourteen Little Avenue.
Standing here again.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Over Jackson, living in nineteen fourteen Little, been there fifty years. Question is, property across the street from the nineteen twenty-three building. Guy moved in four, five months ago, made a trash dump out of it, old junk cars, everything like that. Nicole's working with it now.
Okay.
So you might want to get with her. I didn't know she got that far along, but she's pretty, pretty well into it. She has pictures of it and everything. Lot of junk truck, even the backyard. I didn't realize it. She went around the alley and took some pictures. I didn't even know all that junk was back there. Another old pickup truck. This guy goes around, picks up junk out of alleys, drags it back here and strips it apart. I mean, it looks like a trash dump. It really does. So what that's going to do to my property is, and a lot of others if they live there. So that's, that's my comment today. That's all I can say.
Thank you.
Mr. Jackson, if I could, please, I was going to comment if I may.
I was, I was coming. We have, we have it on our agenda to address today, so.
Okay, great.
We appreciate you coming in and.
Yeah, I wanted to be here and just, you know.
I had a.
Go ahead.
So I wanted to respond to that. So as you know, that we work on it the best that we can, and the way that this works is we're Franklin Township in Franklin County. Come November, we should have on the ballot something that's going to be called Home Rule. If we are Home Rule versus Nicole have to work with it with the county to get the county to come out and see it, if Home Rule is a yes and no, if it passes, then we can't change laws, we can't add new laws, but we as Franklin Township would be able to enforce that.
I see.
So if you see it on there, you'll understand, and this is a perfect example of where we would be able to, as your board, be able to take a situation like this and start working on it immediately versus taking it to the county where they are inundated with a lot, not saying they don't do things for us, don't get that wrong pressure.
I understand. I remember that.
So hopefully you'll, when you see that, you may see that because, understand that because I, for one, would like to be able to untie my hand to be able to work on it right away.
Yeah, because this is just one property out of all the lot.
Exactly.
I mean, you go up and down Little, it's amazing. The other in the middle, I haven't been down there so long, I don't know.
So there, there will be propaganda probably against this because there's a lot of people are used to set in their ways of living and they don't want this to be Home Rule. But Home Rule is nothing more. We can't change rules, we can't add new ones, we can only act on the ones that are there.
Ones you have.
Right.
Okay. Just real quick, I've got something to say. So I wanted to agree with you that Nicole does a wonderful job. I get many people calling me and asking for things to be done.
She's always responsive.
When you get an opportunity and you have an employee, and that's what she is, she's an employee of the township, does a good job, I like to call it out, and I appreciate the fact that you came in and said that today. And come back and join us again at some of our other meetings, okay? All right. Thank you, sir. Yeah, you, you bringing it, bringing it, even though we was already on it, you bringing it up, it really helps us out. No other ones on there?
None, sir.
I have a comment that I received, an email, a couple weeks prior.
Okay.
This, we received, county trustees and me as the administrator from Robin Chaney back on June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four, and Ms. Chaney requested that I read this in a public meeting. First, I'm sure you are well aware that the residents of Franklin Township are upset about you not having any meeting in the evening. I'm not sure why you refuse to do this, but last time I checked, you worked for the residents of the township. We pay your salary and you refuse to listen. Second, the way you treated Jim Stevenson's meeting about a new building, I feel was wrong. If I'm not mistaken, you asked him to do all the work he did on getting estimates and everything. Then to say it wasn't going there on land that Township already owns and there is space to build, instead of trying to cram it all on Frank Road and build onto buildings that can't handle it. Because you feel it should be there, because that's where most of the residents live, is a reason it should go there, until you enforce it for everyone, including the people in the meeting, because I've watched several, and it was only said after you read my email, I will continue to be Robin C., and I own four properties in Franklin Township.
Thank you for your opinion. Moving on to Police Department, statutory.
Yep. Afternoon. Hope everybody's fourth is good.
We have, yeah. We have, we have one, that you guys know, there's a ONGI checkpoint next Friday. Location isn't actually out just yet, but it will be out. We have four officers that are going to be working that, possibly five, and it's paid for by the task force, so their salaries are taken care of. Secondary, these are our stats. We had thousand eleven runs in June. I'll go through twenty assistant other units, six burglaries, two bad checks. Thank you, probably right here. One D.O.A., one dog bite, animal, eight animal complaints, forty-three non-injury accidents, forty-two injury accidents, seventeen stolen cars, two recovered stolen cars, four robberies, ten suicide attempts, twelve, one hundred and twenty-four suspicious person calls, forty-three suspicious vehicles, five assaults, forty-three domestic violence calls, four neighborhood complaints, sixteen alcohol-related calls, seven fights, five fires, that meet where we assisted or got sent to, two, seven juvenile complaints, forty-six theft complaints, eight missing persons, nine people with guns, one person with a knife, four sex offenses, eleven shots fired in the area, ten vandalism, fourteen threats complaints, and fifty-two alarms. That's what I have.
Anything else, George?
Yep.
I've got something, Dave. Do you have a pen on you?
I do.
Because this is going to be a message for department heads, and you can write it down to give, make sure Byron gets it, okay?
Sure.
So we're just going to go over this one quick time for everybody. So I want you to let Byron know, and then this is for everyone. We have a fiscal officer and we have an assistant fiscal officer, and we're no longer using Mr. Willcheck to go to to get any money moved. This is just a friendly reminder, so everybody's on the same page. We are going to use, Mr. Willcheck is doing audits and stuff like that, and I understand he's accommodating and things like that, but we have a fiscal officer, we have an assistant fiscal officer, and if they're not in either or or one, I recommend we go to Mr. Mazur, and you can get to the information to them. So I just want all, I just wanted to be on the record, this is a friendly reminder for everybody, so everyone's on the same page, okay?
Got you.
And that's why I had you stop it, because you have to write it down to give it to Byron.
Okay.
The other two gentlemen are sitting here, it's not, it's not a problem, I'm just doing a friendly reminder.
All right.
I got a question when you get done.
We're not taking questions from the audience.
Okay.
Yep. You can ask it after the meeting, though.
All right.
Your name was it? So, do you, so does anybody have any questions, you guys understand and everything? I think it's not been a problem. Like I said, I just want to make sure we're all on the same page, trying to turn the corner here, and we're trying to, basically where you're reading Mr. Willcheck out. He's going to be doing audits only.
In training.
Okay, in training. All right. Thank you. Mr. Keith Arnold, Fire Department stats.
Good afternoon. Some stats from June for you. Nine hundred and eighty-three total runs, of which a hundred and sixty-one of them were inside of the township. Thirty-two fires, ten of which were building fires, seven cardiac arrests, which one person responded with a heartbeat prior to the E.R. Once a seven. And that's all I have.
On, on the, on the structure fires, are those automatically being followed up by Todd?
Always, if they're township guys.
Okay. Yeah, we need to, we have a lot of, a lot of properties that are damaged by fire in Township that we are going to start cleaning up on.
So I, you want to go ahead first?
No, it don't matter.
So, I'm trying to think of the name of the street, Spector, over a year ago, not Coolbridge, but one of the other ones. What are we doing with the house that was burned up down there? Is that, I mean, is, I had a call about that, and I said I didn't know, I mean, I remember the fire, but I didn't know if it's just that it was mortised up, if that's something that's on the radar.
The one with Hardy?
It's not on the radar.
Hardy?
Yeah, Hardy. Hardy, it's on, I think it's Hardy.
I remember the fire, but I don't. Can you check with Todd again?
Because was there, was it something?
There's a report, but then it goes to the whole under the insurance company, we don't have anything to do with it.
I didn't know if it was an on-state structure, I've never been in it, I didn't know, I didn't know what to tell the people.
We can go look at it if, if we deem it so. I can have Todd go back and look at it.
If we could get a report by the next time to see where we are with that, evidently even like we're, we're working with these ponderos and et cetera. I got a call about to say, well, here's a property that's been sitting over a year burnt, what is, what's going to happen? I, I have no answers. I have no answer.
I think that's totally fire.
Go ahead.
Oh, I thought you were done. So my question is, I called you this morning?
Yeah.
And you were going to talk to Todd about Shakers?
Yes.
And did you get anything on that? And then do you guys know that Ponderos is being tore down by the owner?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
I didn't know it was by the owner, but I knew it was being tore down.
Well, I believe it's being tore down. Am I correct? It's not by us.
I mean, no.
And my problem, my concern with that is, is how much taxpayers' money have we spent chasing after this guy? And now he's decided that he's going to tear it down. I'm assuming there's a way for us to recover?
Yeah, well, I'm discussing with Julie, the township's attorney, right now, how the township will be reimbursed for all the legal fees we have, starting the process to tear the property down.
Okay.
Yeah, we're working on that as we speak.
And that's Ponderos.
That's Ponderos.
And so you realize today was the day that the gentleman should have been here for Shakers, and he's not here now.
I don't see anyone here.
And that's why I asked Bob.
As far as Todd knows, there have been no permit applications or requests.
And he recommended, represented to us at the last meeting he was here, he was going to pull a permit for the roof before he went on his vacation.
Correct.
And there's been none pulled. So at, go ahead, Dave.
Yes, okay. My guys reported to me that since Ponderos has been down, all of the favorites and all those people have moved to Shakers, and that place is just full.
Makes sense.
I, I, I can tell the board right now, as of yesterday, the process is starting to have Shakers raised as well.
So, Mr.?
At Shakers, you saying rate?
Ready, demolished.
Okay, I'm sorry. I got all your perfection, I'm all, so.
So we are able to, and I apologize, I'm jumping in here.
No, no, I'm just, it wasn't on here, and I'm not, I wasn't expecting to be, we thought he was going to show up in the audience.
Right.
He isn't here, this is the department that handles it, and that's why we're taking care of it now.
So my question is, are we able, that's this two meetings that he has not attended, based on the, the board's decision to get, grant him six months, part of the conditions is that he was here or someone to represent him. There's no one here, there's no permit pulled. Are we able to just move forward as planned and give the ice?
That's what he just said, move forward.
Okay.
That, that, there's been, there's been numerous discussions with Julie about this, this property. There's been a couple discussions, actually, and I won't go into the complete details because it would take a long time. Actual discussions with the attorney who represents Shakers Insurance Company and Julie, and there were some different stories as to what the attorney was receiving from Shakers representatives and from what the township was relaying through Julie. Once the attorney realized that he was not getting correct information from the owners of Shakers, and we documented that information with actual photos, we are waiting now to hear back from the insurance company as to what their next step is, is going to be. But then it gets very, very complicated, and there's a lot of legal issues that comes into play, and how we can handle this, this project.
Okay.
But it is starting. It is starting.
That, that, unless, did Todd check anything that we need to know?
No.
Okay.
He has nothing else, Dave.
Okay. Thank you, LT, for your input on that. That, I kind of figured they moved on down there.
I drove through there this morning, and there is access made into the area of Columbia.
Yeah, they, that's what they also felt like that, it's not. They've been, yeah, they've been, site movement and movement, but they're, they don't.
People from Denver's gave permission for them, and he gave the permission in a meeting here, he wanted them moved out, so you guys have the.
Yeah, they are, I have the one, yeah.
Yeah, they got it.
Our town's traffic.
Yeah.
All right. Anything else, sir? I don't have anything, sir. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Road Department.
Hello, everybody. I just got our monthly stats from last month, and then Mr. Mazur put on the agenda for a little bit of an update on the road department building. Mr. Mazur and I actually met with our architect yesterday, had a very good conversation with them, we walked around the lot, we looked at different options and some different things that we can do. A lot of things are in the works right now, he's got some homework he's given us to do, and we're getting everything put together for him. He's going to be on vacation next week, so it would be for.
Twelfth through the twenty-second.
And there's some things that we have to get put together for him, and then when he gets back, we'll get some things set up, I think Mr. Mazur's thinking, thinking about getting a meeting put together with you all, so he can sit down.
Right.
Anything else to add on that?
No, I'll have, at least I'll have more details to give the trustees this time next week.
One other thing I see that Steve has down here on his section, just want to kind of bring it to your attention, every year, I kind of, we kind of have to go into a contract with the city of Columbus for snow removal. We have a couple roads that are within our township where we just keep our blades down, and we plow big, big runs, one of them. El Paso is another one, where you go from the township into the city and then back into the township, we just, we plow that out. So if there's an agreement with the city of Columbus this year, and as soon as the contract and everything is put together, I'll bring it back to the board for your approval signature on it, but what they'll do is, they offer us salt in return for a little bit of roads we do, there's not a big huge stretches that we do, but I just can't see telling the guys, pick your blade up and go about six hundred feet with your blade. You know, our residents travel those roads, so we plow them that way.
So samples will drive from my driveway to the stop sign.
You can't. So, I mean, and that's, it's a good thing that they're willing to, you know, at least reimburse us for, I think they said something like six tons of salt every time we have to go out, if we have to go. So as soon as I have a little bit more information on that, we'll. Another, only other thing that I have is our stats from last month. We collected twenty-nine loads of brush, we did signage repair, once again, go out to Township, which is the only thing, we installed some new street signs, added money back, painted the parking lines in front of Township Hall, and working on, work on the way around the building, getting the rest of it done. Move our township rideways, township cemetery. By the way, did y'all see the fence that was put on?
Yes.
I think that looks really nice. I know I've got to talk to Mr. Mazur, think maybe a little bit down the road, we possibly go into having a new sign, because a former sign down there is faded and it's gone kind of bad. Boo-mowed, we've been mowing all the alleys, cutting all the alleys back, brought along Tri, Little Brigsdale, all of our roads, southwestern, west park, Ritter. We put down thirty-nine tons of gravel in the alley that runs on Searls, on the backside. It, it's an alley that we're constantly in all the time, the trash trucks go down through there and gravel and everything goes out, so we completely redid that alley down there. We ended up, like I said, thirty-nine tons of gravel. Picked up two loads of dumped trash, our maintenance on our trucks and our mowers, we sent out sixteen mow letters, sent out five trash letters, only mowed six household 50 properties, grass isn't growing, doesn't like getting any grain, which is a good thing. We started our preventive maintenance program on all of our storm sewers, where we clean them out, we run a camera, we got a few things that we need to be looking at, some things that brought our dent, we need to look at. Storm grain repair on Prospect and Laurel, delivered topsoil down to the community garden, we go to Water Barrel, put a community garden, got it down there, got it filled up, so we're trying to help them out with this.
Not only did the fence look great at the cemetery, but so did all the work you guys did, and we had a meeting on the third, and I had taken some pictures, and I sent a picture to, they had asked me to send them a picture, and I sent pictures to both of the other trustees, and I just wanted you to know, it was really respectful, the way it looked great with all the little flags and the grass looked wonderful, so I definitely appreciate you and your men for all the work.
That's the thing that we, we try to stay on top of that.
And the fence company, give them a shout out, too.
Yeah. And I have tried.
I understand. Yes. Yeah, Mr. Stevens, your, your department is probably the busiest, one of the busy road departments I see around here recently. I see you guys all over the township. You guys are going to bang up down, especially with the alleys. I seen you booming over money back and.
It's a, it's a cost.
Is it chipper law that's up the street? It goes back?
Down to the school.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They're good about picking leaves up, too. Real good.
Um, anything, Johnny, have any?
I do not.
Thank you, sir.
The only other thing I have is I will be on vacation next week, and I will be staying in contact with Ryan throughout the week like I always do, even though I'm on vacation, I still stay in contact.
Good for you, good for you and enjoy it. I do have one more thing, I forgot. Salt. Salt. You brought up salt from the city. Should we be looking at, when are we looking at purchasing salt from the county or?
We have already went into contract with the.
I couldn't remember if we've done that yet or not.
Yeah, I've already got a, we're in a new contract right now. We don't know a price, we never do, until they get everybody's tonnage that they need, and then they send that out to bid, and then when they get all that back, and they figure out who's going to supply it, either be Cargill or whoever, then they let us know what it's going to be per ton.
We had quite a bit left over from out here.
Yeah, we're, we're pretty, pretty full.
Well, at least we got. We got plenty of salt.
Well, let's keep our fingers crossed, we don't be a whole bunch of it, just one or two.
But the good thing is, it's not like milk, it doesn't go bad.
No.
Thank you, sir. Enjoy your vacation.
Yeah, we're going to go play a bunch more ball down in town.
That don't sound like vacation. Not to me.
It's a working vacation for me.
All right. Fiscal Department, Ms. Justice, the floor is yours.
Yes, I have a couple of motions. The first one is motion to approve accounts payable presented on July eleventh, twenty twenty-four, regular meeting of Board of Trustees, be resolved by the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, that the board makes, and motion to approve accounts payable from June twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four through July tenth, twenty twenty-four, in amount of one hundred sixty-seven thousand nine hundred and seventy-two dollars and eighteen cents, from check number seven zero four five seven, two seven zero five two one, and electronic vouchers, eleven twenty dash twenty twenty-four through eleven ninety-three, twenty twenty-four.
So moved as the resolution's written, I would ask for a second.
I'll second.
Any questions? I would ask for a vote.
Okay, Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Okay. The other thing is, is motion to approve payroll, payroll reports as written, presented on July eleventh, twenty twenty-four, regular meeting of Board of Trustees, be resolved by the Board of Trustees, Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the board making motion to approve payroll for the month of June, twenty twenty-four, for elected officials in amount of nine thousand one hundred and sixty-three dollars and twenty-four cents, ACH deposit on July first, twenty twenty-four, electronic vouchers, eleven eleven dash twenty-four through eleven twenty-one dash twenty-four, and payroll beginning June sixteenth, twenty twenty-four through June twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four, in the amount of one hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars, five hundred and twenty-four, eighty-eight cents, ACH ACH direct deposits on July fifth of twenty twenty-four from electronic vouchers eleven twenty-two dash twenty twenty-four through eleven ninety-five dash twenty twenty-four, for a combined total of one hundred ninety-six thousand six hundred eighty-eight dollars and twelve cents.
So moved as the motion is read and written, and I would ask for a second.
I'll second.
Any questions? Any concerns?
Jim?
Hearing none, I'd ask for a vote.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And then the only other thing I have, which you did on the note, is I've been working with Jeff Wilczek on getting the twenty twenty-five tax budget together. I emailed you guys.
Yes.
So, I'm waiting on Jeff to review the changes that he asked me to make.
Yes, I saw he said the highlighted areas, and I sent him an email as well.
Yes.
I asked him that if, if everything, you know, where he was just, just as a board member, and I haven't heard back yet.
I'm just waiting on his response for the changes that need to be made, and I believe we agreed that we'd all meet back Monday at nine to finalize.
Go ahead. I'm sorry. I take you to the meeting?
Yeah.
I, I need to speak.
Okay.
I'm sorry to cut you off, but I, we have to have a conversation about this because I had a meeting with Mr. Wilczek on Tuesday. We came in here Tuesday for a meeting about the telephones.
Mm-hmm.
And Mr. Wilczek wanted to speak to me, and I had a meeting with Mr. Wilczek and had some questions for him. And so we are not in compliance. Doesn't have basically anything to do with Lindsay, but. So I asked Mr. Wilczek what we would have to do, and when I say we're not in compliance, the budget had to be up for review for ten days. It also had to be in a publication, and we don't have it in a publication.
It wasn't on our website.
But it has to be in a newspaper.
For sure.
Can you help me out here, Steve? What the name of?
David Porter.
So I need you to help me out here if I get off track, because you're involved in this. I brought you, you were at the meeting, and then I, so. So after my meeting with Mr. Wilczek and then Lindsay and him missed each other on Wednesday, am I correct? Like you guys didn't, weren't able to get together on Wednesday.
Yes, he didn't tell me when he was going to be.
This isn't, no blame, hon, I'm just letting you know. So what I did is I called Carrie Ritchie. Because I was going to be asked to vote on this and things like that, and in a conversation with her, I asked her how we can make this right, and she said she would be willing to give us an extension to make it right. So we have the ability, the way it's set up right now, if we choose not to do it, we don't have to do it, but I've made arrangements to where we can, we can post it. Looking at the calendar, for the next ten days, starting on. Ten days. Help me out there, Steve. Is it thirteenth, four?
Fifteenth to the twenty-fifth.
Okay, fifteenth. The next time we come back on the Thursday is the twenty-fifth. That would be the ten days.
Okay.
We would be in compliance then, because this is what she's got done now.
Sure.
And this has to be what is displayed. And what we had on our website was not this.
Okay.
So it doesn't work.
Okay.
And so we would be in compliance because we have time to get it to the newspaper and have it posted. If you want to see the budget, it's now open for review.
Sure.
And I wasn't trying to do anybody's job when I did this, but in order to, the lady said if we choose not to do it, don't do it. You don't have to call her back. You don't have to do anything. So Lindsay, you could reach out to her.
Yes, I've been in contact with Carrie Ritchie, and I would have appreciated if you had copied me in on this.
Well, I didn't. There's no, this was just over the phone tone. I didn't, I didn't like Cindy. I do it old fashioned.
Because I've been in contact with her, too, because at first the original dates that I got from Mr. Wilczek were not correct. And I had to get in contact with her to verify other dates, so.
Well. If I could ask a question?
Go ahead.
I'm fine with an extension, but I would look to you to see, would you want for your department an extension so that we could be in compliance?
Yeah.
And do that. And then the only thing from the board would need to be if you make a motion for that, and then we.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Well, I was going to say, then I think that we wouldn't need to come back on this subject until the twenty-fifth.
That's correct.
And I agree. And the reason that when you all were sitting here talking about it, that I didn't want to talk about that is because we can't do business when we're sitting here just having a discussion. But if I would have brought that up, I know it looked shady, we would have had to do business. So that's why I am bringing it up now, ma'am, not to hit you with it blindside.
Yeah.
All I was doing when I made my phone call was protecting me because I have to vote on something.
Yes.
And I'm not going to vote on something that ain't right.
Right.
And Jeff Wilczek told me, and we pay him a lot of money, that it wasn't right. And then I called Carrie Ritchie, and she said, it ain't right.
And what's funny is me sitting with Jeff Wilczek, he's never once said any of that, and he actually gave me the wrong dates.
Okay, I understand. He gave you what he did, and I, and I talked to him about that, and if you want to, he gave you, he built in days for where if anything went wrong, we had time to correct it. And then you got the dates from Carrie Ritchie, and you walked it right to the date, and then something went wrong where we couldn't get together, and then we missed it. Do you understand what I'm trying to say?
Jeff also on vacation the two weeks prior to getting all of this wrapped up.
I guess, I guess what this board needs is a motion from you to, you're asking a motion for a, to apply for an extension.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
Since it's your department, do you want to make the motion to the board that we ask for an extension?
Sure.
Okay.
Make the motion.
I would like to ask the board to make a motion to get an extension for the twenty twenty-five budget review. Is that right?
Perfect.
I will, I'll gladly accept that motion. I would ask for a second.
I'll second.
Any other discussion on this matter?
Yes, sir. But the, we need to, on this motion, we need to state what the parameters are from what date to what date. Do you know the dates if we have it?
I'm going to add, we would be extending it until the twenty-fifth.
Okay.
I think is what he just said.
Okay, so that would just need to be in the motion.
I would ask for the extension to be until July twenty-fifth of twenty twenty-four?
In order to get it posted in the daily reporter. So we're still in con, uh, discussion right now, right?
Yes.
Does that take care of it all that I?
So it needs to be completed on the fifteenth.
It has to be out. We have to publish it in the daily reporter that it's open for review for ten days.
And then it's submitted to the county auditor.
Eight-two. No, that's the last day she'll accept it. She would love to have it before eight-two. So Lindsay can call and talk to her. She's a very nice lady, and she says she has spoke to her. I was not overstepping here when I made the phone call. And if this calls is bad feelings, or if you feel like I'm overstepping or micromanaging, like you like to say about me, that I'm micromanaging, I'll just vote no the next time, and I'll just move on. I was calling to get the information. I thought I was doing a good thing for the township and for Lindsay.
I don't think anyone's questioning that. Yeah, I think you did it. I think you did it.
All right, well, you keep saying it's your department, it's your department, and I'm just like saying, okay.
It's her department to make the motion.
Okay.
That's all I was doing, is giving her the opportunity where he can make that motion. But since she was here, I wanted to see if she wanted to make the motion on behalf of her department. That was all.
Gotcha.
So, and you would like to have the resolution on the twenty-fifth?
We'll just sign everything on the twenty-fifth. It's the next day. We're all back here together. I thought it was the best way to set it up. The lady was very accommodating. So you're, you're, you want to reword your motion?
Just.
Would you like us to reword your motion, please?
And that's the word to make a motion to ask to accept the extension for the twenty twenty-four budget review until July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four?
That'd be twenty twenty-five, but till.
Oh.
We'll vote on it on the twenty-fifth and ask for an extension until August second to get it downtown.
Yes.
I will, I will gladly accept that motion, and I would ask for a second.
I would second.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, I would, I would call for a vote.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Thank you. And Mike, thank you. And I don't think anyone was. They're stepping out of bounds. I'm just trying to call, I'm not going to, I'm not going to do anything that's going to put us in jeopardy.
I appreciate it.
And I wasn't allowed to talk to you about it, you know, you, I don't know when I'm allowed to talk and when I'm not allowed to talk.
In here.
So that's why I had to wait. Well, here, here's the thing is, you know, like what Mr. Fleschman was doing was, we're all trying to train and get as much Lindsay on board as much as possible. I think he was trying to get.
Right.
That's how I seen it.
Okay.
All right. Anything else for us?
Yes.
All right. Well, Mr. Mazur, it looks like your section is full today, so we will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Chairman. First thing, we'll get this out of the way. I just wanted to give the board an update on Officer Matt Tedwell. He was hurt last week. Nothing major. We're hoping to have him back on duty by July. He was, he was making an arrest. Got a little tingle up.
It happens. We have all the, all the documentation that we need?
We do. We do. We're everything from his physicians.
Okay. All right. Anything else for us?
Um.
I know you do.
Quick discussion, if you would like. I know, you know, I talked about it for a minute earlier. Just an update on the progress of the grants for Westland Mall. The township has received three point five million dollars in grants to construct a boulevard through Westland Mall. Those grants came from the state of Ohio and through Congressman Carey's office. We're still waiting to see if we receive any grant funds through Senator Sher Brown's office. But I just wanted to let the board know and the public know that to date, it's promising that the township has received these funds. And I will keep you abreast when we start getting into the process of contractors and engineers and construction. But we're heading down the right path.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for that update.
Uh, the next thing I have is, should I do this gentleman's resolution first? We'll do a long one first?
Let's do a long one first. Let's get it out of the way.
And you're with this chest in nineteen twenty-three Little Avenue?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, yes, sir. I have resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero nine five. It's a resolution declaring a property owned by or located at nineteen twenty-three Little Avenue, a nuisance. Be resolved by the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the board has found that the property located at nineteen twenty-three Little Avenue, Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio. Notice parcel one four zero 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 three two five five dash zero zero in Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, is littered with garbage, refuse, and debris. The board hereby determines the maintenance of the garbage, refuse, and debris on the property constitutes nuisance pursuant to five oh five point eight seven of the O R C. Trustees order the following actions. Trustees may provide for abatement control and removal of vegetation, garbage, refuse, and other debris from the land in the township. If the board determines that the owner's maintenance of that vegetation, garbage, refuse, or other debris constitutes nuisance. Every seven days before providing for the abatement control or removal of vegetation, garbage, refuse, or other debris. The board of trustees shall notify the owner of the land and any holders of liens of record upon the land that, one, the owner's ordered to obey control and remove the vegetation, garbage, refuse, and other debris. The owner's maintenance of which has been determined by the board to be a nuisance. Two, that vegetation, garbage, refuse, or other debris is not obeyed and controlled and removed, or if provisions for its abatement control and removal are not made within seven days. The board shall provide for the abatement control and removal, and any costs incurred by the board in performing that task shall be entered upon the tax duplicate. And become a lien upon the land from the date of entry. The board shall send notices to the owner of the land by certified mail, if the owner is a resident in the township or is a non-resident whose address is known, and by certified mail to lien holders of record. Alternately, if the owner is a resident in the township or is a non-resident whose address is known, the board may give notice to the owner by causing any of its agents or employees to post a notice on the principal structure of the land and photograph that posted notice with a camera capable of recording the date of the photograph on. If the owner's address is unknown, cannot reasonably be obtained, it is sufficient to publish the notice once in a newspaper of general circulation. The owner of the land or holders of liens of record upon the land may enter an agreement with the board of trustees, providing for either party to the agreement to perform the abatement, control, and removal before the time the board is required to provide for the abatement, control, and removal under Division E of this section. Which states, seven days after the notice is given under Division B of this section, or within four days after notice is given under Division C of this section. The owner of the land fails to obey control and remove the vegetation, garbage, refuse, or other debris. Or no agreement for its abatement, control, and removal entered into under Division D of this section. The board of trustees shall provide for the abatement, control, and removal, and may employ the necessary labor materials required at the fourth due before the date. All costs incurred when approved by the board should be paid out of the general township fund from monies not otherwise appropriated. Except that if the cost occurred at six five hundred dollars, the board may borrow monies from a financial institution to pay for the cost of the whole apartment. Be it further resolved that the board finds and determines that all formal actions of this board concerning and relating to the pass of this resolution were taken in open meetings of this board. And that all deliberations of this board that resolving the formal actions were taken in open, meetings open to the public in compliance with all legal requirements. Including but not limited to the O R C section one two one point two two, except as otherwise provided thereby. And that this resolution shall be enforced effective immediately upon its adoption.
So moved as the resolution is written, I would ask for a second.
I'll second.
Any discussion on this address of this resolution? Hearing none, I would ask for a vote?
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
The next resolution I have is, uh, resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero nine one. Its obligations approved by the township administrator. Whereas board of trustees in resolution twenty twenty-one one thirty authorize the township administrator to approve incurred obligations of ten thousand dollars in less on behalf of the township. In accordance with section five oh seven point one one of the O R C. And whereas pursuant to provisions of section five oh seven point one one A of the O R C, the obligations approved incurred by the township administrator must be subsequently approved by the adoption of a formal resolution of the board of trustees. And that period is from June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four through July ninth, twenty twenty-four, in the amount of forty-seven thousand one hundred sixty-one dollars and twenty high cents.
So moved as the resolution is written, I would ask for a second. I'll second. Any discussion on this resolution? Hearing none, I would call for a vote.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Next resolution is resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero nine two. It's a resolution accepting Jane Stevens revised M O U and rescinding prior resolutions twenty twenty-two dash zero one three and twenty twenty-two dash zero two seven. Be resolved by the board of trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio. If the board approves to accept the revised M O U between Franklin, the Franklin Township Board of Trustees and Land Superintendent Jane Stevens, effective immediately. This resolution rescinds resolutions twenty twenty-two dash zero two seven and twenty-two two dash zero one three, and I have it exhibited in half. This, this resolution reflects the actual M O U concerning salary and benefits for the road superintendent. And I will be happy, and should you have questions, I'll be happy to answer those.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Uh-huh.
I noticed that this came over, did we just get?
Go ahead.
No, what I sent you, I think, was, I know it had, still had Mr. Horn's name on it, because Mike was good enough to catch it. I sent you another one. So your question again, John?
Well, for me is, I need to take time to be able, I just want to compare the two, what the difference is. I did not know that this was coming onto the agenda until five forty-seven last night when that came in.
Okay.
So I am going to accuse myself of voting on this, so I'd be a no vote, but I just wanted to be able to go through it.
And basically what this is, it was too open, for lack of a better term, too. And basically what this is, there were two open, for lack of a better term, two resolutions, the two were rescinded. And in the attachment, there was some confusion where Mr. Stevens kind of crewed flex time or comp time, and it was actually brought out by the auditor. So what we, what I had Jim do was clear up the language in that Schedule B, his attachment there. So it actually reflects flex time, not comp time.
So does this all, because also being that he is salary, has this been through legal?
Well, the original resolutions have been, and he, he's allowed to have accumulated flex time.
Can I say something?
Mm-hmm.
Because, I mean, there's no changes, really no changes on benefits or anything at all. Three years ago, when the three of us, Will Byron, the three of us were told we had to separate ourselves from their collective bargain, because we were all kind of associated with that, St. Alder's told us we couldn't consider it comp time. So they froze that time, and we started a flex time thing. Well, those hours have sat there for three hour, for almost three years. So that's when we, just like, okay, what are we going to do with that? Then a discussion came up about just move that over into the flex time, get away from the comp time. And that's why we only, the only changes was verbiage, a verbiage. There was no benefit change or anything. Those hours there, they've been accumulated for years.
So is there any difference between, and I think the other departments are the same way, when somebody is salary, you know, they can either work under or over, majority of the time it's always over. But what this is doing is then compensating for anything over forty hours. Is that correct?
No, it's, it's nothing more than just an hour per hour.
Right, but I mean.
It's not like an overtime thing, and then.
Right, so you, you can take time off. So if you worked three hours over.
Nine hours late, come in an hour, yeah.
So then you, you would come in three hours late, but it doesn't have a cash value.
No, there's no cash. You can't cash it in. You can't do anything with it. You just, it's just time that you've accrued that you could use.
That's why it needed to be cleaned up from the audit, because, that's my understanding, is the reason why it needed to be cleaned up, verbiage, is because comp time can be haged in.
Sure.
And flex time cannot.
And salaried employees can't be considered comp.
Right.
And it was just a language change.
And you can only carry over twenty hours of flex time from year to year.
But those hours have been sitting there in limbo since Mary and Nick.
I think.
Because we didn't have any direction on what to do with those, you know, at the time. So now it's finally come to fruition. Let's figure out what.
I, I think Lindsay's reached out to Labor Relations of the state. So is this where it says C. attached, exhibit A? Is this? I, I didn't have it, so I, I have some of the same things that John has too. So it wasn't like in, like I should have, you're saying it's in what I should have received?
All, all, no, all it is is a word change from comp time to flex time.
That's all it is. There's no benefit change. There's no adding or subtracting or anything.
Basically, you're representing, this is in your M O U, and everywhere where it says, uh, would you say the other word?
I see flex.
Now says flex.
Correct. Yeah, there's, like I said, there's no benefit change or anything. It's all in the M O U that's already been approved. We just had to change comp and flex.
And for us to finally be able to move what's been sitting on that comp time for three years to the appropriate slot.
Make it legal.
Let's get all the proper. Gentlemen, do you still want to table this after this discussion?
Well, I know how I'm going to vote. Again, me getting this at five forty-seven yesterday to see that that was on there, we should have, I should have, I feel for me, in case any questions I have or want to look at that, if I'm going to be voting on it the next day, to me.
That's, that's fine. You just say you want to table it and we'll move forward.
But I'm.
Your guys can. This doesn't affect anything, you're, you're going on vacation. This has no effect on your vacation right now, right?
Actually, it doesn't really affect anything. It was just a language change of few words.
Right, so it isn't going to matter if we approve it today or we approve it on the twenty-fifth, correct?
No, you can do it whenever.
So I'll, I'll, I'll go ahead and, I, I'd like to just look at it again. I like to see stuff. I've came in here and said that.
Yeah.
If I want to have stuff. I'm not saying there's anything wrong with it. I seen the letter. I see where it says flex and everything, but I don't, I do not mind taking two weeks if it isn't going to affect you in any way. If it meant you couldn't, if it meant vacation wise, I'd get it, you know, but it doesn't, you're going on vacation. We're going to be back here in two weeks. Can we just take care of it in two weeks?
I didn't realize it was going to be on the agenda today. Which is fine. I mean, it's something that, I mean, it, it doesn't affect me on what I'm doing at all. I've got vacation time. So it's just something that we need to get clarified.
Okay, since, since the resolution was read, I'll make a motion that we table Resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero nine two until, um, twenty, July twenty-fifth meeting in order for all of us to have enough time to look into it. And I would ask for a second.
I would second that.
Ma'am, any more discussion on this? I would ask for a vote.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, next resolution I have is twenty twenty-four dash zero nine four. It's a resolution declaring motor vehicles located in nineteen twenty-three Little Avenue parcel number one four zero 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 three two five zero zero in Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio. A junk motor vehicle provided for its removal pursuant to O R C five oh five point eight seven one. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township if the board hereby determines that a motor vehicle located in nineteen twenty-three Little Avenue in the unincorporated area of the township, which may be generally, generally described as, one, a silver sedan with shattered windshield; two, a white dump truck with red body; cab with pad with trash, waste; three, a red truck in the rear of the property on a trailer hitch filled with debris with damaged tires and body. It's three model years or older, apparently inoperable, and thus constitutes a junk motor vehicle as defined in Section five oh five point one seven three of the O R C. The board determines that in the best interest of the township and its residents, if the board proceeds under Section five oh five point eight seven one of the O R C, and the board hereby orders that the record owner of the property or the executor for the estate of the record owner or other lawful representative of the record owner remove or provide for the removal of the junk motor vehicle from the property within fourteen days of data receipt of written notice of the passage of this resolution. The board authorizes the township administrator to provide written notice to the record owner, his representative, or the executor of the estate of the record owner, and to hold, and as a holder of liens of record on the property of the board's intention to remove or cause the removal of the junk motor vehicle from the property as provided in Section five oh five point eight seven one. The board hereby directs fiscal officer to certify any and all costs and expenses that the township incurs in the removal of the junk motor vehicle from the property together with a general description of the property, the auditor of Franklin County, Ohio, for entry upon a tax duplicate as a lien upon the property to be collected as other taxes in return of the township's general fund as provided in Section five oh five point eight seven one of the O R C. The board finds and determines that all formal actions of this board concerning relating the passage of this resolution were taken in open meetings of this board and that all deliberations of this board that resulted in formal actions were taken in meetings open to the public and in compliance with all legal requirements, including but not limited to O R C Section one two one point two two, except as otherwise permitted thereby. And finally, this resolution shall take effect immediately upon its passage.
So moved as the resolution is written, I would ask for a second.
I'll second.
Um, ma'am, any discussion on this? Ma'am might call for a vote.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
So take care of your nineteen twenty-three.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Then the last thing I have is a resolution, it's actually to then and now. It deals with the, um, grant writer pertaining to the fire department's safer grant. This is something that, again, much like the resolution you gentlemen talked about pertaining to Mr. Stevens. This is another grant, uh, resolution that came up at the last minute. It's a request of thirty-five hundred dollars utilizing A R P A funds to pay, as I said, a grant writer to help our fire department apply for their safer grant.
I, I, I don't need to cut you off by the middle stream, but we did, we did discuss the thirty-five hundred dollars and made appropriations at last meeting. Correct?
Yes, they were, the supplemental was last meeting.
Okay, so we are briefed on it?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, okay. Go ahead, Mr. Stevens. Sorry. Didn't mean to cut you off.
Jim?
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh.
I'll read the resolution. I'm sorry, Mr. Mazur.
Resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero nine three. It's a resolution authorizing the fiscal officer to pay Ronald D. Benedict, D B A Fire Grants Expert, L L C, and this would be a then and now. Whereas on or about April twelve, twenty twenty-four, Ronald D. Benedict, D B A Fire Grants Expert, L L C, provided grant writing services to Franklin Township in efforts to obtain an extension of the current safer grant as a continued funding. After product services were rendered, the township received invoice number thirty-seven for which a purchase order with prior certification of availability of appropriations and funds to pay the obligation by the fiscal officer needed to be approved by the Board of Trustees with the approval of Resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero eight seven, supplemental appropriation number six, utilizing A R P A funds. The Board of Trustees hereby acknowledges and receipt of that and now certificate from the fiscal officer and authorizes and directs the fiscal officer to make payment not to exceed the amount of thirty-five hundred dollars to Ronald D. Benedict, D B A Fire Grants Expert, L L C. With all formal actions of this board concerning relating the adoption of this resolution were passed in an open meeting of this board and in all deliberations of this board and any of its committees have resolved in such formal action were in meetings open to the public in compliance with all legal requirements including Section one two one point two two of the O R C. This resolution shall be declared an emergency and be in effect immediately upon its adoption.
So moved as the resolution is written, and I would ask for a second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, I would ask for a roll call.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Okay. I want to say that's a P. O.
Gentlemen, that's all I have to.
Um, well, while you're up there, I just, I, you, you briefly touched on the Westland Mall and, um, I just want to let everyone know how much work Mr. Mazur has been putting in to secure not just this, this grant money, but other grant money. He is, he is a great asset to this township and, um, we do, I, I, as a board member, appreciate all the hard work you do. And I don't think sometimes we, we tell you enough of, um, the work that you do is not going unnoticed, so I wanted to make sure you, you understood that. Um, that is all for me. Mr. Flusman, do you have anything?
The one question that I may have for the board, and maybe this is illegal, seeing where our meetings are going, um, emails and opinions. How do we, because the board can be bogged down with multiples of people that, uh, emails that come in. How do we legally handle opinions versus questions and et cetera? Do we know what the statute is on that?
Emails from residents or, you know, they, I don't want to just say residents
because we don't know if someone's emailing is a resident or is not a resident, but if they have questions for the board, so many meetings that I then to, I've yet to see any submissions of, uh, questions pertaining to something as every meeting, just what was based, what was basically said the previous meeting. So my question is for the board is, are we entertaining, um, now on our agenda that we are going to be taking submissions from the public?
Uh, all I know is that for, for years, when we send out the meeting notices specifically from the agenda, it gives the township, residents, or whomever really, the opportunity to submit. Uh, how's it, how's it actually worded?
It is worded questions.
Questions.
So I, I would say since we're saying ques, in my opinion, answering, trying to get you a clear question, is it says questions. Opinions are not questions, but that's a decision this board has to make.
So what I'm asking the board is, are we, and we can think about this and then get back, how do we want to structure this? Not to keep someone from not being able to ask a question, but to read off something that someone may, um, just want to go on about for three minutes? Um, or is it something that is going to actually be a question for the board versus a statement to the board?
Can, can someone not come to the podium and do the exact same thing though?
Well, that's what I'm asking.
But I think they have every right to just come up there and state their opinion on something.
Well, then, what I'm asking is, um, is, that's why I ask it, you know, if, if this is something that we need to ask legal, or is this something that, um, other townships? You know, this would be a good question that the, uh, when we do our day-to-day train, our training and stuff. Is there a difference between sending it in versus actually coming in and signing up, is what I'm asking? I'm not trying to.
Oh, I didn't, I was just trying to, I was sitting here.
I wonder what the protocol is.
Uh, I was, I think there's times people come to the podium and it's not necessarily a question.
Right, right. I agree.
I mean, you've been land-baseded many times, I'm sure.
Oh, yeah.
You know, I, I haven't been yet to, I don't feel too bad. I'm sure it's coming. And I'm going to be able to please everybody.
And please everybody on the town.
So I'm just saying that would be.
Yeah.
I was just sitting here thinking about what you were saying. I, I just, I think it's going to go back to, and I understand the viewpoint on that it's a business meeting and it's in the middle of the afternoon. And so they're saying basically they can't make it here, so that gives them the option to get their statement or their question, uh, to the board.
Right, and it had nothing to do with the one that came in.
No, no, I, I, I agree.
Yeah, I'm just looking at structure of how we go forward.
Or, understood.
Yeah, because if we don't have a protocol which is just open, it's almost like Jim's, um, correcting his M O U on wording, I just want to make sure that we are in compliant, or what, what options does the board have?
I, I think you could set your own policy.
Yeah, I can't see why we wouldn't be able to set our own policies on it, so.
You could say you're not submitting anything. That, um, if you want to present yourself, you have to present yourself at the podium. I don't know what kind of feedback that you'll get from the community. But yeah, you can, you can set, I'm pretty certain any, any type of person you'd like for. I'm trying to see.
Um, that's all.
Anything else, John?
There was none. Let me just think real quick. There was one other thing that you said, and I can't think of it, so I'll pass.
All right, Mr. Blovin.
Yes, so I do have a couple of things. So our employee appreciation days have gone on pretty well. We, for those of you that don't know, we've had two of them now. And we gave away some ball tickets. And then the week of, um, and it was won by a police officer. And then the week of July the fourth, we had a little ice cream thing between the employees. And it was won by the road and, and the young ladies here in the office. And lucky enough, the elected officials were in on that one, and we won too. So I would like to introduce one today to you fellows that is going to involve the residents of the township. And so I've called it a community engagement, uh, contest. And I've had Mr. Mazur run it past legal, and it's all good to go as long as you guys are good with it. And so what I would like to do is, I would like to have the residents submit a guess on. on how many, you know, the fire chief or the police chief gets up here every month, and they give a total number of runs. And so I would like to give the residents a chance to guess how many total runs for next, for the month of July, that our police department and our fire department goes on. And we're going to, for an example, we're just going to use quick numbers. So the police does 200, and the fire department does eight. The winning number would be 1,000. We're going to let residents submit a number, and that resident will, whoever has the winning number without going over, will win a $50 Dairy Queen card that has been donated.
That's great, so...
No money from the taxpayers whatsoever.
So sort of what you're, they're going to enter one number, it doesn't, they're not entering two numbers?
I actually have it all written out here for you, and it says how it works. So if you're interested in going further, I'll tell you how it's going to work.
Okay, sure.
Okay, so it's going to be one entry per household. You must be a resident of the township, and to be eligible is closest to the number without going over. At a address, telephone number, the winning number, provided proof of residency. So when we get a winner, they have to prove that they live in the township. Like, I'll deliver the card, I just see the driver's license, or you get what I'm saying. I want it to be just like it is a scholarship fund, this is for people who live in Franklin Township.
Gotcha.
The way to submit them is two ways, you can do it at mikelevins@franklantownship.com with first responders, runs, guests in the subject line. The second way would be at 2193 Frank Road, sealed envelope, trustee Blevins, first responders, run guests on the outside of the envelope. Submission deadline is August the 5th, by 5 o'clock in the afternoon. We will select the winner at the August the 8th meeting. The three trustees will get, like Bob and Mr. Byron will get together and give that number. I'll have a flow chart on what everybody's guess is. As soon as they give the number, we'll add it up, we'll know who it is, we'll announce the winner.
Gotcha.
So I don't know if you guys, it's a chance to get some community engagement. I think we can get eyes on people, let them know just exactly how many runs these guys go on. For people that don't know, this may get a few more eyes on it. And that was the whole purpose for trying to put this together.
Sure.
So gentlemen? Would you like me to try to do a motion? Is that what I need to do?
I don't even think you need that.
Then I don't need anything, great, I've got it ready to go, I have a fire, and I was hoping to move ahead. And so I will get this run off, and before you leave here today, you can take one with you if you'd like, pass it out to your neighbors, get the word out. I'm going to ask Nicole to put it on our website, I'm going to ask, I know you have a site, Brenda, and I forgot who else I said last night at home. The only other thing I have is don't forget our get together with the Fire Department this weekend on Sunday, all the locations, been talking about it, and it happens this Sunday. Hope to see some of you all out there. And then for the next meeting, I know you guys want to end this one, I would like to talk about, and I'll put it on the agenda, I have dates that I went over with Byron and the chief for the Christmas parade, and the pictures were saying, but we'll leave that till the next time. And that's really all I have.
Now, if it feels comfortable for you, we can always give it a motion if you want to.
I don't, I don't want to, John, I was glad when you said I didn't have to.
I saw Ms. Justice suffer with it, and I thought, she's going to make fun of these. Because I'd be suffering through it too, so.
It comes, it comes with the territory, and it takes time to get used to it, so. And nothing else from the Board? Nothing else from Mr. Mazur? The department, police department?
Adjourned.